I would like to call the, oh boy, September 25th School Board Meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Human.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
W Felton.
Here.
Claflin.
Here.
Director Lolliberty and T Felton are absent. Chair Roche.
Here.
That is five present.
Excellent. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I will ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening, as well as our Committee of the Whole regular meeting minutes for September 11th, 2023, and our joint work session with the City Council minutes from September 14th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Fast competition tonight. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. And tonight, we get to kick things off with quality of action. Our middle school principal is here with a crowd.
We are. We brought a great crowd with us tonight. Thank you for having us. Students and staff, I'd like you to come on up. And you can kind of fill in this area here because you will be using these microphones in just a minute. So I'm gonna... So I have a good number of students with us, and I think that we might have one more coming in. Trevor's family was letting me know that he was on his way. So I'm gonna let these students introduce themselves to you. They have the sixth graders go first and then the eighth graders. Today, we're here to talk about the transition to middle school, which is oftentimes causing a lot of stress. But I think that our eighth grade web leaders did a really nice job of helping those students kind of ease into that transition of middle school. And so I'm gonna have Anna start here, and then we'll kind of go in this line.
And then would you tell your name and what elementary school you went to?
My name is Demiana Young, and I went to Lincoln Center.
Hello, my name is Marley Cross, and I went to Capoja Education Center.
Hello, my name is Raina Ronadon, and I went to Lincoln Center.
My name is Jewel Velazquez, and I went to Lincoln Center.
Those are all of our sixth graders. And now I'm gonna have the eighth graders introduce themselves to you. And if you'd like to share the elementary school you went to, you can, but you are firmly middle school students now, so go ahead.
My name's Elizabeth Bemmer. I went to Capoja.
My name's Eliana Clayne, and I went to Lincoln Center.
My name is Kaylee Swanson Hippie, and I do not remember... Wait, I went to element... I don't remember.
It was that far long ago. So one of the reasons that I like to have the sixth graders share what elementary school they went to is because we really are recognizing that we are taking students from sometimes many different schools. Capoja and Lincoln Center are not the only elementary schools that our students came from, and putting them together and asking them to sort of reform a community. And we really are being very mindful about that community being a community of learners and defining what it means to be a Packer. And so I also have two staff members with us. They're the facilitators, two of the five facilitators for the web team, Emily Fremsted and Mark Westfall. And so thank you for the... And they're here, and Mark's like, "I don't really need to talk." And I was like, "That's unusual." But I am glad they're here because if the students are sort of maybe forgetting some of the things, they kind of have that spotlight fright, then our teachers are here to kind of direct them with a question or two. So one of the things that I wanted our eighth graders to talk about is how they got prepared for being a web leader. And so I'm gonna have you guys kind of come up, and you can share how you got prepared to be a web leader.
In May, before the school year was over, when I was in seventh grade, we did like a kind of day off from school, all the incoming web leaders. And they had all the old web leaders come in and kind of just teach us what web was about and just kind of play games to get us like feel comfortable around each other since this was a group that we were gonna be working with for a while.
In August, before school started, we did those same games, but we learned kind of how to play them. So then we'd be prepared to teach them to the sixth graders and to, yeah, prepare for the sixth graders.
Kind of like what they said. It was like where we were playing games and stuff to like, so then we could teach the sixth graders. It was kind of like how we learn to like, for them to learn as well.
Kaylee, would you talk a little bit about the community service project you did, just a couple sentences?
For the community center?
Service project?
Yeah, service project. We went to feed our starving children. We like, kind of like...
Mr. Westfall?
Yeah. Yeah, so kind of like what we did was like, we kind of like made like these bundles of food. And we kind of like learned on like how to like, we built community so we could like build community with the sixth graders. But we kind of like helped to like build our community first so then we can learn our community.
And I really appreciate our web facilitators because they set this up where they did not just games and not just learning how to be facilitators, but also recognizing that our community is bigger than ourselves and talking about, you know, how can we help people in our global community and how are we gonna help people in our local community as well? And so you can see some of the pictures here from that service project. That is something that we're also incorporating in all of the activities for the rest of the year, is how can we serve our communities? So I'm gonna have the sixth graders come up here. And when I asked them this morning this question, "How did you feel before the first day of middle school?" They were a little bit timid, but now that they've had a chance to talk about this and think about it all day, I'm gonna have them come up, and we'll start over here. How did you feel the first, before the first day of school?
Before the first day of school, I was pretty nervous because some of the classes I did not know, and some of the old teachers I did not know either.
For the first day of school, before the first day of school, it was pretty nerve-wracking, but my sisters, they went there before. And it was kind of like, like, they told me about how I would be expected, like how I would expect how it like would be and stuff. And it was nerve-wracking, but I was mostly excited and just, yeah, excited.
I was nervous before the first day of school because I did not know where to go at all, so yeah.
The first day of school, I was kind of nervous but excited to see what class I had with my friends.
All right. And so the first day of school was not a regular day of school. It was a day where we did all of these things and then a few more. And earlier, when, well, we'll have the students tell you how they felt after that first day. But our web leaders led these things. And so one of the things that I wanted to do is ask the web leaders, you know, when you're looking at that long list of things that you did that day, what did you think was really challenging about being a leader of sixth graders?
I feel like it was very, it was very challenging. When, like I was in charge of this one game, and it was where it taught you that you can't just leave everyone like in the dust, and you have to build teamwork. But it was very hard to get the sixth graders' attention. They were really excited.
I also noticed that same thing. It was kind of really hard to get their attention. And then once you got it, it was really hard to keep their attention. I think it was probably a whole bundle of like nerves and also excitement. And so it was challenging to like make sure that you like didn't like do the wrong thing or say the wrong thing because like we all wanted them to have like a great, like fun, exciting first day. And so it was hard to know like, that like you could like mess up, and then it would like make them have a bad day. So it was kind of hard to like make sure that you knew you were doing like helpful stuff.
So kind of like Eliana said, it was like hard, like once you got their attention, it was like kind of hard to like get it back. But we wanted to like build community with them so they felt comfortable with being there. And, yeah.
Thank you. And so we have some photos here from our first day of school. And I'm gonna have the sixth graders come back up and talk about, how did you feel after the first day of school?
After the first day of school, I felt informed of how I can get around the school and use, like, I used the information to, like, get around and use it for in classes. And the games helped for building my, the community and making new friends. And the games also were fun to break the nerves as well.
After the first day of school, it was pretty fun because they played the games to introduce each other. And after that, it was pretty fun to make new friends and get our ways around the school so we can find the classes and stuff.
After the first day, I felt less nervous about the next day because I knew there was gonna be people to help us like around with our classes and our lockers.
After the first day of school, I was feeling kind of happy about school, but I was feeling a bit confused because I didn't know how like the day two and day ones work.
Fair.
So this morning, when I asked them, every single one of them said that they felt tired at the last day, after that first day of school. And I can tell that they've had time to marinate on that question. So web leaders, how did you feel after the first day where you were instructing students?
I felt very great and happy that I could help the community and the new, hopefully, new leaders of web.
I felt proud of myself that I was like able to like step up and do this because sometimes it's hard for me to like, like take a step and like do like helpful things sometimes. And so I felt proud that I was able to help them and that like now I knew that like they'd be able to get their way around school and just feel more comfortable.
Well, after the first day, I felt like really happy with myself on how well like I knew they were happy about being here. And I was just really proud that they looked up to us and like hoping that they could be a new web leader. And I was really happy that they could learn off of us and know that they can be theirselves and stuff.
And so while the eighth grade web facilitators were leading the groups and the games, we had staff members in every space. And the staff members came up to me after the first day, and they said, "This eighth grade group is awesome. They worked so hard. They were so kind, and they didn't get frustrated easily." And so I just, I really want everyone to hear that I'm really thankful for you and all of the web facilitators and the web leaders. We've got a really great group this year. The next thing I want to talk a little bit about is web for the rest of the year because our eighth graders do continue to be our leadership group for the rest of the year. And we have been able this year to put the web leaders into two connections classes. And so there are these two homerooms where students are facilitating the leadership activities for the rest of the school year. And do we maybe have one... Liz, would you mind coming up and just kind of reading through these so that the community knows what's coming up?
We are planning a bonfire. We did one last year, and it's basically just a bonding after school and like roast marshmallows and fun activities. And actually, in a week, we are gonna do a door decorating contest for Hispanic Heritage Month. And we are going to read stories in sixth grade connections classes, and then we're gonna push for more activities later in the year.
All right. So we have some time for you to ask us questions. Our staff members are here to kind of help us if we're unsure. And we just have some question, time for you to ask questions for us.
I have a question. So this might be for the principal or for the eighth graders. Do you think the way that we have staggered the start dates, that, you know, sixth graders get basically the middle school to themselves on the first day, you know, be ninth graders when it's in high school, do you think that helps aid in building the community on that first day so it's not like right into it?
I thought, I thought it was really helpful to have like, not like the whole school there because otherwise, like we did like tours of the school building for the sixth graders. And so like, I feel like it just would have been really, really chaotic if there had been everyone there. And so I found it really helpful that that was what we did.
Are all of our web leaders expert lock openers at this point as well? I know that is like one of the greatest middle school challenges.
Yeah, I think they can open locks in their sleep.
Hi, Mark Westfall, class of 1993 St. Patrick's Elementary in Onalaska, Wisconsin. If you guys had to say it, I had to too. Yeah, the lockers are coming along. During COVID time, we didn't use them as much for a variety of reasons. And we still have kids every day asking for a little bit of help and a little bit of guidance from either teachers or their classmates. But they're coming a long way. I've seen a lot of our web students out there helping people unsolicited, which I think that's the best part, is they're out there during the passing time asking kids, "Do you need help?" And I mean, a lot of kids are like, "No." But there are some that are like, "Yes, please come help me." And it's adorable to see how they are doing that, and we didn't tell them to do that. That's them being natural leaders and giving them the experience to be leaders as well. We're very purposeful of doing that process, so.
Outstanding. Thank you so much. This is such a big part of the culture of what our school is that this is a program that absolutely makes our schools a more welcoming place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and students, come on up. You get swag today.
Decorate to your heart's content. Good job. Good job.
Thank you for coming.
Good job. Good job.
Yes, thank you, girls.
Thank you. All right. Now, this is also the customary part of the board meeting where we lose half of our audience. They all flee quickly. I can't imagine why this next part would not be the most engaging. All right. Up next, we would typically report from our public listening sessions. We did not have any submissions at this time. If you are interested in submitting public comment to our public listening session, that can be done at 4:15 prior to the first school board meeting of the month and at any time on the district website under the School Board information. And next, I will turn things over to Vice Chair Weber to report on some of our work from the Committee of the Whole that happened just prior to this meeting.
Thank you so much, Chair Roche. So in our Committee of the Whole meeting, we spent a good chunk of time with Principal Borg talking about the yonder?
Yonder?
Yonder. I can never say... It's the pouch that all the middle school students put their cellphone in and so that it's not a distraction during the learning day. So it's a pouch that middle school students put their cellphone in, and then they don't have to worry about, you know, checking text messages or social media or, you know, any of the myriad of things that everyone probably does with their cellphone. But it was really detracting away from learning. And so this is the second year that we've done those, and so we had a great conversation. And just the amount of like discipline or negative interactions that, you know, staff had to have with students over cellphones dramatically dropped. And we saw some statistics about that. So that was very encouraging to know that there are solutions to problems when everybody works together. We also heard about our preliminary levy certification information, which you will hear more from Director Brady in a bit, and had some committee updates. And that was it.
Excellent. Another great feature of the yonder pouches this year is that was to no cost to families. So appreciate that. We do not have a superintendent report at this time as he is not with us, but will return at our next meeting. So up next, we have our consent agenda, which are items that are typically financial claims, staffing, and personnel in nature, are not for public discussion or explanation prior to the school board. These have been discussed in our Committee of the Whole and delivered through Board Packet. Do I have a motion for, to approve our consent agenda?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. And we do not have any policy items under review at this time. Policy Committee is meeting in the coming month, so I expect some new information there. And up next, we will introduce business items where we are looking for a motion for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2023 payable 2024 proposed levy. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Second. And for discussion, I will turn this over to Brady Hoffman.
Good evening. So we are at the point in the year where it's time to certify our preliminary levy. This is an annual piece that the school board works through. We did review this this evening at the Committee of the Whole. But the process starts in August where the district has to provide certain information to the Minnesota Department of Education so they can run through all the calculations of the levy to then make those numbers available to us here in September. So here in September, we'll have the school board certify this preliminary levy, which then helps initiate the tax process. So proposed tax statements will come out in November with the preliminary information. In December, there will be a truth in taxation hearing we're required to hold. That'll take place on December 11th at 6:00 p.m. And that's where we'll share required information around the budget, around the levy, and make available for public comment. And then in December is when the school board will officially certify the final levy for the 2024 calendar year. So as part of certifying the levy, we do recommend approving the proposed levy at the maximum. The reason why we do that is MDE is still working through calculations within the levy system, so those numbers may fluctuate. So by certifying at the maximum, it allows those changes to get taken into consideration here over the next couple months. So currently, the proposed numbers are showing a decrease in our proposed tax levy of 1.9% from the prior year. A big part of that is driven by declining enrollment. But all of these levy items are either voter approved, or they're levy items that are approved in statute. So not necessarily at the discretion of the school board. It's either voter approved or per statute. So this is just part of the process to keep these levy dollars rolling. And I will turn it over to see if you guys have any questions.
Board members?
It seems like while all of those taxes are very complicated and come from a lot of different places, there will be a decrease in what's coming from schools. And while overall there's that tax decrease, individual households might see different results depending on a lot of different factors, and it's pretty complicated. But we're still in a really good position with the funds that are coming in. So thank you for the update.
Yep, there's city taxes, county taxes, other taxing jurisdictions that all play into it, as well as what each individual homeowner's tax value is. As all those moving parts shift and fluctuate, that's what affects what each individual taxpayer pays. So just because we are currently showing 1.9, they might realize something different depending on those other factors.
And we're also, you know, continually being affected by our sort of low birth rates in our community. And so that declining enrollment is another factor that we're kind of constantly keeping our eyes on through this process as well.
Correct.
Making sure our schools stay a healthy and good place for all of our kids to be.
When will the truth in taxation meeting be?
December 11th at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Okay. With no further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Up next, what we will be building sort of in rotation is also an update from our new school board representatives. But I think in terms of priorities, we were outvoted as there is homecoming events happening tonight and fully understand that they maybe chose that over hanging out with us. So do sort of watch as student voice is a really important part for our board development. And in months to follow, we will hear from them and also hear from their experience as well. And with that, then I'm turning over to board members for where they have seen a passion. Wendy tells me she has a lengthy list, so if I can turn to Wendy Felton first.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Roche. First, I'd like to say that I personally attended the Educational Foundation Walkathon, which was held last week up at Lincoln Center on the track. I want to give a personal thank you out to everyone who attended. It was a great crowd. And especially all those who volunteered. That was really nice that everybody helped out. And I even gave a personal thank you to Mr. Eleshko for him donating all of those hot dogs that we had that night. So that was, that was really good. So we thank everyone who helped generate the funds for the Educational Foundation. And the other thing too I attended was the senior center luncheon, which was last Thursday. We really appreciate Linda Jacobs' abuse. She prepares the food. We had, oh, it was really good, baked potato soup. It was excellent. So we always thank Linda for that. And next, I'd like to talk about, as was mentioned, it is Homecoming Week, which is a lot of fun in South St. Paul, as I too am a South St. Paul graduate. So homecoming was always very, very popular to us. And for, at the Capoja Education Center, they are having a little fun thing. It's called Dress Up Time. So each day of the week, they get to wear a special outfit of clothing. So tomorrow, they're wearing what they call mismatched clothing. You can wear all different kinds of styles. Doesn't have to match up, so you can do that. And on Wednesday, it's called Dress Your Best Day. If you want to wear a nice fancy little outfit, that would be really fun. And Thursday is Class Color Day. And what we have, each grade is was asked, is being asked to wear a certain color of clothing on Thursday. And this also applies to Lincoln Center as those students also will be following this class day. So on Thursday, if you're a preschool student, wear pink. If you're in kindergarten, wear red. If you're in first grade, dress orange. If you're in second grade, dress yellow. If you're in third grade, dress green. If you're in fourth grade, wear blue. If you're in fifth grade, wear purple. And on Friday, everyone is asked to celebrate Packer Pride Day. If you have any Packer Pride items, please wear them on Friday. And that is applied to Lincoln Center and to Capoja for both schools. And another thing that Capoja is planning on, they're calling it After School Ninja Warrior Camp. If you are interested in doing some of the ninja warrior activities, you can contact the gym instructor, and they will, they will help you sign up for the times and get it approved. And also, as you know, our schools, they have PTAs, parent teacher associations. Capoja is having their first PTA meeting coming up next Monday, October 2nd, at 7:00. And they are always interested in having families join the PTA in support of their programs that they like to do. And they are always interested in having families join the P T A in support of their programs that they like to do. And also, as you know, Capoja Education Center, they have movie nights. So, September twenty-eighth this week, they are having their first movie night, which is at six o'clock. And the movie that they're showing is called Inside Out. So if you wanna attend that, like I said, it's on September twenty-eighth at Capoja. And then for some activities for Lincoln Center, as I had just mentioned, they are also doing the clothing colors for each day of the week. And they are also having what they call Steam Museum, which is coming up in mid-October on the twelfth and thirteenth. And as I had mentioned, I know I mentioned that at our last meeting, they are seeking any parents who would like to be volunteers at Lincoln Center. You can fill out an application to be a volunteer for some of their programs. So it should be good. And also, one thing that is, that the students can do, most people are familiar with our Mayor's Youth Task Force. Uh, and if you are a student in fourth grade up to twelfth grade and would be interested in joining the Mayor Youth Task Force, they are having an information fair coming up actually tomorrow night, Tuesday, from five until six thirty, being held at Angelo's Pizza Restaurant here in South St. Paul. If you would like more information on joining the Youth Task Force, you know, please check out and visit Angelo's tomorrow evening. And as you know, with homecoming, especially at the high school, grades nine through twelve, how excited that is for them also, including our middle school students. The, the high school grades nine through twelve are also having a dressing program for the rest of this week. Uh, tomorrow, they're calling it Grafit Day. I've seen some pictures posted on what, what the clothing could, would look like, mostly gray type items. On Wednesday, PJ Day. If you have pajamas, pants and shirts, there were pictures shown on that also. You can wear PJs. On Thursday, Adam Sandler Day. There's pictures of Adam Sandler there, different clothing that he's wearing if you would wanna try it. And of course, Friday, which is the day of the homecoming football game as we are playing against Inver Grove Simley High School. That is Packer Pride Day. So we encourage everyone, get, get your Packer Pride shirts, coats, hats, whatever you have that are available to promote South St. Paul to do that. And then also for homecoming, the Homecoming Dance will be held this coming Saturday, the thirtieth, from eight until eleven P M. And it's, the tickets are ten dollars each and it's, they're calling it the South St. Paul Homecoming Masquerade Ball. So, most, uh, secondary students, grades nine through twelve, will be attending that event. And it, it is, it is a lot of fun. And tonight, i-if you, if you're, if you're at home now, there's still plenty of time to go, it is the Homecoming Coronation Event, which will be held at the high school in the auditorium, starting at eight o'clock. And there also is a pep fest to celebrate and really encourage and support our, our football teams and all our members that have, are playing in the football game Friday night, which will be held at one forty-five in the secondary building. As we support all of our sports teams this week during Homecoming Week, it, it is a lot of fun. And one other thing on the personal note, as I have mentioned, I know I mentioned it last time, cuz I am a South St. Paul grad also, we are starting to plan our class reunion. So it is a lot of fun to plan a class reunion. So, we look forward to seeing everyone. And I will be at the football game myself Friday night. Thank you.
And Kim Hume?
Uh, last week, Monday, I had the privilege of spending the day at Capoja and helping with photo, uh, photo day. And, uh, it was so fun. Every class came in, every kid so pumped to get their picture taken. And I asked most of the kids, like, are you excited about the school year? Are you liking your teacher? And every kid was just like, it's really great. It's really fun. I'm happy to be here, which is just really fun to hear. It was really exciting. So that's where I saw the passion. Our Capoja kids were pumped to be at school.
Thank you. Uh, and Claflin?
Thank you. Uh, so glad to hear they're excited to be at school. It's really fun. Um, I was at the Walkathon this past week and would really like to thank the cross-country team who were there with their games. It was a great event where we could be a little more social, uh, and see people rather than being strung out along the streets. And the games really attracted a lot of people. So it was a great chance to talk to other parents and students. And those cross-country runners were so patient with kids. And I'd also like to, uh, mention the meeting that we had with the city and thank the city council members for, um, meeting together with us. I think it was a great chance for us to build some relationships and meet, uh, folks that are also out working for the best in our community. And I think we really did identify some common values. And whether you've been here for one day or multiple generations, it was pretty clear that you're welcome here in South St. Paul and there's a lot of pride about being a South St. Paul Packer, no matter if it's school or city.
Well said. Monica Weber?
Um, I also would like to thank all the people in the city who helped, um, put together the great joint meeting that we had. I agree, I had not had occasion to sit down and chat with a lot of the city council members. Um, and so just being able to be, um, in community with them and we had a little dinner before the start of our meeting. Um, and just talk about, you know, shared goals and shared visions. And it was, uh, an incredible meeting. And I can't wait to continue, um, that partnership going forward. Um, I have my homecoming button on and I hope I win a prize.
Excellent. Uh, lots of exciting things happening in our community at this time. Um, tonight, we are going to be moving into a closed session, uh, per the open meeting law. I'm gonna associate one three D dot zero three for teacher negotiations updates with Joel Miltier and Brady Hoffman. Um, with no other items on our agenda other than moving to closed session. Do I have a motion?
To?
To move into closed session, um, for an update on teacher negotiations.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? With that, we will be moving into a closed session.